Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the public session of the Committee of the Whole Meeting of the Halton District School Board on May twentieth, two thousand and twenty five. Please be advised that the meeting is being recorded and livestreamed on the hdsb.ca and on the hdsb YouTube channel. We have trustees joining us in person and online. Online, we have Chair Collard, and I can't see who the other. There we go, and Trustee Ahmed. And in person, we have Trustee Bryden, Trustee Rocha, Trustee Baxter, Trustee Daniele, both student trustees, O Chu and Hao. Trustee Zhang, Trustee. Shallowworth Horn, Trustee Horn and Trustee Gray. And Director Ennis, can you tell us who is in person from staff?
Thank you so much, Vice Chair. We have a full slate of staff here to support tonight's meeting.
Thank you very much. As this meeting is a less formal meeting, we'll switch now to using our first names. Tonight, acknowledging our traditional lands will be Donna. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We begin by acknowledging the land and our responsibility to care for and respect all that provides us with life. This land upon which the HDSB is situated is on the ancestral treaty entitled lands of the Anishnaabik, Ojibwe, Michisagi Nation, which is now known as the Mississaugas of the Credit. Michisagi Territory in the past and present continues to host both indigenous and non-indigenous peoples. The HDSB is committed to continuous knowledge building with respect to actions that address and resolve the ongoing impacts of colonialism. We do this by learning and understanding the true history, treaty obligations, duties and responsibilities, and indigenous rights, while actively maintaining mutually beneficial relationships and collectively respecting and caring for the land.
Thank you. Onto approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting. Robbie, would you like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
I would, thank you.
Okay, I'll put the question on the floor. Are there any objections to approving tonight's agenda? Seeing none, the agenda is approved by unanimous consent. Onto declaration of possible conflict of interest in relation to our agenda this evening. Are there any declarations of possible conflict of interest? Seeing none, we'll proceed on to presentations. Tonight, we have two. The first will come to us from our student trustees Caitlin and Charlie. This is an initiative that they brought forward at the beginning of their term. It's something that's near and dear to their hearts, and I'm sure that of many students. And it very nicely aligns with one of our commitments of the new multi-year strategic plan, and that's mental health and well-being. They've been working on this initiative for a good portion of the year, seeking input from their peers and senators and students across the board. And they're here tonight to present to us the results. So we can see where they want to take that further. So Caitlin and Charlie, I welcome you to the presentation desk. And they brought with them the Mental Health Student Task Force, so please do introduce your peers once you're settled.
Okay, hi, everyone. Good evening. Thank you so much for having us today. Today, Charlie and I, as well as our three amazing members of the Mental Health Day Task Force, is very excited to be presenting this. I'll let them all introduce themselves a bit afterwards, but first I wanted to start off with kind of some background and context as to why we decided to bring forth this initiative and to start this initiative in the first place. So a while ago, actually, I was reading this article, and I stumbled upon a quote I want to share with everyone. That really resonated with me. Hello, okay, sorry about that. Anyway, as I was saying, I stumbled upon this quote that was actually by a grade seven teacher from the Halton District School Board. And she was talking about student mental health and said, "You can't teach kids algebra when they feel their whole world is crumbling." And everyone here really resonated with this quote because we think mental health is definitely, you know, something that comes before all. You can't have like student achievement and you can't have learning in a positive environment if you don't take care of your mental health a priori. So this is kind of, you know, a background information that really sparked our interest in wanting to address mental health this term. And according to the two thousand and twenty-three Ontario Student Drug Use and Health Survey, thirty-eight percent of high school students in Ontario have experienced some level of anxiety or depression in their lives. And according to the two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-four Mental Health and Wellbeing Strategic Plan, and probably also the one coming up in the next four years, having students be a part of mental health, learning and education is definitely one of our priorities. And therefore, our solution is threefold. We really wanted to do something that was student-led, with student-led activities and learning. We also wanted to directly address stigma surrounding student mental health. And finally, making it accessible to all students, not just the students who feel comfortable enough to step up and ask for help, but also the students, you know, in the shadows who are afraid to come forward. Which is why we're very excited to be introducing board-wide HSB Mental Health Days and kind of presenting this idea to you all. So here's a quick look at our agenda. This will be presented by our lovely HSB Mental Health Day Task Force, which is basically a lot of students who are very passionate about mental health. We all came together to work on this initiative. Mainly, we're going to present this in three parts. Firstly, just some background and context as to Mental Health Days and our task force, as well as maybe what other school boards are doing, how this aligns with our multi-year strategic plan. Then we'll be going into just generally what the Mental Health Day handbook is as like something that we want to bring forward to the board and to different schools. And finally, we'll be going a bit deeper into it, talking about the different components and why we think it will be successful. Before all, I wanted to give everyone an opportunity to introduce themselves as part of the Mental Health Day Task Force.
Thank you very much, Caitlin. The Mental Health Day Task Force was put together by Caitlin after connecting with the Mental Health and Wellbeing Student Advisory Committee in November, two thousand and twenty-four. As you can tell from that extremely passionate introduction from her, she is one of the driving forces on this initiative, and we've all been doing a very great job. The Mental Health and the Mental Health Day Task Force is composed of the Mental Health and Wellbeing Advisory Committee, Student Advisory Committee co-chairs Rachel Bresnahan, Hannah Menhale, Zainab Hussein. The Student Senate Mental Health and Wellbeing Subcommittee co-chairs Gabriella Hurd and Suvar Patel. HSB Mental Health Lead Stephanie Wallace, and of course, student trustees Caitlin Ho and Charlie O Chu, which is me. The Mental Health Day Task Force is a strong force bent on the betterment of the HSB, now we tangibly address student mental health. But I think we want to give our Mental Health and Wellbeing Student Advisory Committee co-chairs a little bit of an opportunity to speak about themselves.
Hi, everybody. My name's Zainab. I am a eleventh grader at Milton District, and I am one of the co-chairs of the Mental Health Wellbeing Student Advisory Committee. It's a mouthful, I apologize, but yeah, I'm just really excited about this initiative, and we really hope that you guys take our presentation to heart, so thank you.
Hi, my name's Rachel. I'm also one of the co-chairs of the Mental Health and Wellbeing Student Advisory Committee. And just to reiterate what Zainab said, we're just very passionate about this project, and we're so grateful to have the opportunity to be part of it, so thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name's Gabriella Hurd, and I'm one of the co-chairs. I'm a grade eleven student from Dr. Frank J. Hayden, and I'm the secondary co-chair for the Student Senate Mental Health Wellbeing Subcommittee. And this is an initiative our Subcommittee has been really passionate about, and all of the students who have been participating have been really excited about it.
Even though Mental Health and Wellbeing Student Advisory Committee Co-Chair Hannah Menhale and Student Senate Mental Health and Wellbeing Subcommittee Co-Chairs Suvar Patel couldn't join us today in person, they have contributed very much to this initiative, and we do want to make it known that they have helped out quite a lot.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to start off by introducing what is a Mental Health Day. So a Mental Health Day is a full school day dedicated to prioritizing the mental health and emotional well-being of students during stressful schooling periods. This is by allowing students the opportunity to engage in student-led activities, discussions and self-care practices, actively addressing mental health, stress relief and overall wellness. This would be led by students for students. Mental Health Days is an initiative designed to encourage student leadership and engagement with administrative assistance if necessary. So when would this take place? This would be twice a year during each midterm season, so November and April. Planning commences in September of every school year, two months before. So who? This would be organized and mandated by student well-being teams at each school. Schools would be recommended to create those student groups. And what? Similar to events like Really for Life, lasting one full school day with the minimal classroom instruction, while actively engaging students in lifelong mental health strategies. And in next year, focus on mandating at secondary schools across HDSB.
How will Mental Health Days relate to the multi-years strategic plan? As you can see in the multi-year strategic plan for the two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-eight school year, it says that "We will support well-being in all aspects, ensuring everyone can thrive academically, physically, socially and emotionally. The key objectives are building and maintaining healthy relationships and supportive and safe environments while promoting and supporting the mental well-being of students and staff." We believe that the Mental Health Day initiative aligns extremely well to this commitment of the multi-year strategic plan in that Mental Health Days build and maintain healthy relationships by providing fun avenues for students to de-stress and express themselves, while Mental Health Days also support safe environments by de-stigmatizing mental health and fostering support of the mental well-being among students.
Okay, and now I just wanted to quickly address how Mental Health Days relate to the multi-year strategic plan, but in terms of the Student Senate. So for the Mental Health and Wellbeing Subcommittee, this year we have created an article on how to manage stress. This was created by students for students, which was something our committee found really impactful. And we have also focused on discussions around mental health versus mental illness, and have discussed the idea of implementing youth well-being teams at all schools as well as Mental Health Days. And I quickly also wanted to address an initiative that I have planned for two years in a row at my school at Dr. Frank J. Hayden, and this is the Mental Health Walk. So this year, we were able to host our second annual Mental Health Walk, and this is a great example of a Mental Health Day initiative as it is student-led. The main goal of this walk is to raise awareness on youth mental health, and it runs for the first two periods of the day. And basically, what this walk entails is each grade is called down separate, and they are called down to participate. So we have had it laid out where they get the opportunity to walk the track, play lawn games that we borrow from the city of Burlington, and then there's also a really fun competition to raise money for Joseph Brandt Hospital in their youth mental health programs. Last year, we were able to raise about twelve hundred dollars, which is something that our school found really exciting, and every year, everybody gets to look forward to this initiative.
Thank you so much, Gabriella, for all the amazing insights. Now I want to talk a bit about the provincial president and how Mental Health Days may look in other school boards as well as within AUSTA ACO, which is the Ontario Student Trustee Association. So this idea wasn't really made by us alone. I was influenced by a couple of my fellow student trustee peers who were able to successfully pitch this initiative to their school board. Most notably, I talked to the outgoing student trustee of the Hamilton-Wentworth District School Board, and he was able to pitch the idea of monthly mental health or flex days to his school board, where all secondary schools would have to mandate like a monthly flex day, whether that be like a whole day or half day or even one period. And he said that the structure was up to administration. Something that really, you know, pushed me to also want to bring this back to the Halton District School Board was that this student trustee really emphasized how important it was to de-stigmatize mental health, and he said that this was a very effective way to do it. So a lot of times, you know, as a student, you're always go-go-go, and you always feel like, you know, you can't take a day off to really nurse your mental health. You feel guilty when you just want to like lie down and read a book or take a break. So by having something like for all of the school board, something like mandated by the school board that shows that HSB is supporting Mental Health Days, is supporting students taking the time for themselves to relax, to regroup and to prioritize themselves. As well, I recently saw in the TDSP, they had like a children's mental health week during the mental health week, and that was a board-wide recognized mental health type of initiative with the theme being unmasking mental health. As well, in AUSTA ACO, we have a lot of initiatives going in terms of the Mental Health Day and trying to get this to the ministry level. So I'm currently working with the Mental Health and Wellbeing Advocacy Interest Group. They are trying to develop something similar to what we are doing, so we're actually a couple of steps ahead. They're trying to develop a mental health handbook that we could bring back to different school boards to pitch something that we are currently doing right now. And they hope to bring this resource to the ministry in the next two years. So I think it's really nice that we're talking about this now and not in the next two years, just because it shows that it just feels better.
As Caitlin said, we heard about the province response and other school boards, and with that, we are very happy to introduce to you the Mental Health Handbook.
Sorry, guys. I think it's great that there is so many people behind this desk because it shows just how many students are like interested in this, and we want to take like an active leadership role, so while it's a bit crowded, you know, it's worth it. Okay, so we created this handbook to assist both school administrators, staff supervisors and student leaders in the planning and implementation of Mental Health Days within their schools because we understand that there's so many administrative and logistical considerations in hosting an event like this, and we wanted to make sure that it was, oh, I'm on the mic, oh, sorry, we wanted to make sure that it was as accessible and feasible as possible for everyone. So this handbook recommends a step-by-step approach to planning and executing a Mental Health Day. It features like all the necessary crucial considerations such as during, such as before the event, so resources and community outreach opportunities during the event, like a mock schedule for the day of the event and after the event, so forms of gathering feedback from students on how it worked, and also forms of leveraging the impact of Mental Health Days. So we knew that hearing from administrative staff was going to be the most important thing in ensuring this event's success because while it does sound amazing in theory, there are a lot of, there are a lot of perspectives that we needed to address, such as that one. So we developed a survey and we sent it to all HDSB principals to gather that perspective. Here's what we found. Fifty-seven point one percent of the people who responded already offer Mental Health events at their respective schools. Additionally, eighty-seven point five percent of that group received student input in these events, and sixty-two point five percent collaborated with external organizations to host these events. This really goes to show the importance of student leadership and community engagement when hosting these initiatives, which is something that we really wanted to highlight in our handbook. We also asked them for areas of concern, and these included funding, resources, manpower, teacher supervision, attendance tracking and student engagement, which we also aim to address in this proposal. There was also an initiative run at Abbey Park High School, and Caitlin goes there, so she knows more about this than me. But basically, it was called a try-it day or a flex day, which is basically a day for students to kind of try different activities and try new things in order to like kind of unwind from the stress of the midterm season and all of that. So it saw a lot of success, and we chose to model our Mental Health Day against the success of initiatives like this so that we would be sure that it would go well.
So the components of an ideal Mental Health Day are school-wide workshops, presentations and school spirit events and individual activities. The aim of the Mental Health Day is to empower students in their identity and support their mental health journey. As such, the day should include a myriad of opportunities that encourage school community, but also empower them as individuals. The specifics will vary depending on the needs of each school, but some recommended activities to aid in brainstorming could be an open ceremony assembly, Zen spaces, which can include therapy dogs or library activities, keynote speakers and a fundraising walkathon. So some of the planning that goes into this requires establishing a youth well-being team. So the Mental Health Day aims to center and support youth mental health. As such, it's vital that their voices are part of the planning process from the start, and so it's important to consider arranging a team comprising of a few diligent students and staff members who are interested in supporting this initiative. The next step would be to delegate roles, so the youth well-being team should delegate the roles amongst themselves. And this can look like someone in charge of community outreach, a logistics lead, marketing lead, a student leader liaison and someone who is a fundraising lead. The next step is to create a timeline for event planning and to work towards this goal. So this will be unique to each school. However, the document that we created will include a framework to help inspire this process.
I would like to again, once rea-, I would like to again, once reiterate that it's very nice seeing so many people behind this desk. Really shows how many students are game for this Mental Health Day initiative. But I would like to hop into the event schedule example. This is just a template, so you don't need to follow it to the letter. But at eight thirty AM, we might start off with the motivational kickoff or assembly. We start the day with like energy connection and a mental health day mindset, basically letting the students know what the day is about and what to expect. At nine AM, we'd hop into a sort of choosable adventure for the rest of the day. Students will select from calming creative activities that could include yoga, art, music, journaling, or end a work career just to catch up on the missing work that they might have been assigned before. At ten AM, we would hop into some student-run activities. Like we said, the Mental Health Day is led by students for students. So we'd like to emphasize that these are peer-led games, talks and discussions focused on mental wellness. At eleven o'clock AM, we might move into healthy movement and social time, containing more physical activities like fitness classes, sports and nature walks to boost the mood and to really help de-stress and relieve some moving your body around. At twelve PM, we'd hop into lunch and wellness, time to eat, relax and recharge. Optional wellness mini sessions will be available. At one o'clock PM, there might be an inspiring guest speaker who can give an engaging discussion with positive messages around mental health and resilience geared towards students, of course. At two o'clock PM, we would go into a Mental Health Challenge Walkathon, which is a fun, team-based activity combining movement, competition and learning. And at three o'clock PM, as we're winding down the school day, might do one more fundraiser walk and reflection, where the community would walk for awareness or fundraising, followed by closing thoughts and gratitude. And then, of course, students would leave enjoying a day where they got to relax and really help recharge their mental health batteries.
Okay, so while this activity, this event should center the student of voice, it's critical that there is support from the administration. And so some examples of how administration can support the process can be through recommending guest speakers, aiding in finding local businesses that can help in sponsoring the event, links to various mental health-related activities and lesson plans, and a list of student and staff contacts, contacts for any questions or further support related to the event.
And we know this is kind of hard to find too, so we hope to add a
Um, and we know this is kind of hard to find too, so we hope to add a list of these resources. Um, to our mental health day handbook, so that admin can have a better time finding these um, parts. And of course, we understand that sure if we have like one mental health day, that might reduce the stigma a bit. But we can't just have that throughout the school year. So we hope by having these mandated um, student wellness teams at every school. Uh, these student like leader groups could help um, initiate these mental health days. That they could also work throughout the whole year to ensure that mental health is being talked about every single day. Because it should be a priority every single day, not just on mental health day, not just during mental health week. So here are three ways that we will recommend within our handbook for this to happen. I think firstly, having weekly or monthly check-ins would be amazing. So that can include, you know, having a form or Google Doc. Asking students how they feel about the mental health days, but also just mental health in general. Or also they could have like this be integrated weekly such as Wellness Wednesday or like Mental Health Mondays. Um, secondly, we could also try to incorporate mental health into a student's life. By offering mental health or work-life balance tips during exam season, for example. Or giving a shout out every month to a teacher or like a student or staff who has contributed in. Like positively impacting a student's mental health or like helping or in supporting a student. I think thirdly, representing mental health through creativity could be very nice. This could look like wellbeing teams or students making murals or paintings or posters or art about mental wellness. Creating safe spaces where students can draw or journal or express creatively. Because I find this to be a very great outlet myself to help uh, alleviate some stress that can come with mental health.
So I'd like to thank you all once again for listening and tuning into this conversation that we're having about the mental health day initiative. I know that a lot of things here may seem little much, but we hope to add them and expand upon them in the mental health day handbook. So I'd like to open the floor and ask if um, there are any questions about the mental health day initiative. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, trustees, I, I ask you to please use Crestron if you haven't logged in already. Um, thank you so much for this uh, amazing presentation, very insightful and you've clearly, uh, this is a. Uh, passion project for you. Uh, you deeply care about uh, your own mental health and wellbeing. And also that of your peers across the system. So that, that is amazing and um. And really a worthwhile um, initiative. Uh, I appreciate all the work that you've put into it, um, the research that you've done. Uh, and sharing with us the precedents that were, that are shared across the um, the province in terms of what other schools are doing. Um, the teacher court was a really good framing for all of this, right? Because if our mental health is not up to par, then it's very hard to participate in, in daily life and with all, all that we need to be doing. So, so that, that's really um, a great framework that it sets and the, it provides us the impetus to do something, right? To um, engage and support ourselves and each other. Um, so from what I understand, um, you've done the research, you've compiled a handbook. Which will serve as a resource to administration. And it's wonderful to hear that half of our secondary schools already do have a mental um, health day. So that's great because um, that I think will inspire others and will show some examples of what's functioning. Uh, well and properly. Um, and I'm certainly familiar with the tri-day at Abbey Park. I, I did go attend that day and that was amazing to see. And, and the engagement and how much fun students were having and they were able to do whatever they were interested in. And, and you know, that, that sits well with, with everybody's um, wellbeing. So I will open up the floor um, for questions. Um, uh, from what I understand, at this point, you're looking to meet with Director Ennis. And um, kind of suss out how this can work. Uh, in the, in the schools that are not already uh, participating and, and carrying on with a mental health day. Um, so this is um, this is kind of an introduction of your initiative and, and, and marketing of, of what you would like to, what you envision. For HDSB. So with that in mind, um, if trustees have questions or, or comments or suggestions. Um, we open up the floor and Jean, I see you're on.
Thank you very much, um, through the um, vice chair. Uh, thank you for uh, your presentation this evening. I am blown away by the level of detail and the work that's been put into this. But um, also my takeaway is just the fact that you are empowering students. To have this as a student-led initiative within our schools. And I think that that's where the success will come more than anything else. Um, I'm inspired by the fact that we have so many schools as, as has been noted that uh, are already participating. Or producing some form of this, but uh, um, I look forward to looking and watching how this. Uh, moves through our system. I'm not aware of any other special day that we declare in our board at this time. Help me if I'm missing something here, but thi- this is, this would be groundbreaking, I believe, for our board. And uh, and, and that it would be board-wide initiative is, is very uh, intriguing. But uh, certainly fitting in so well with our multi-year strategic plan. So thank you for all of your work. And again, student-led, student-centered, I think is going to be the key to success for this. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it. Next speaker, Robbie.
Thank you. Um, I'll, I'll echo the thanks for the, the very thoughtful and in-depth presentation. I. A lot of the suggestions and activities that I saw within that. Not all of them by any stretch of the imagination, uh, were focused on mental health at an individual level. And, and what can you individually do? How can you create strategies that help you manage stress? And, and my observation is that over the last couple of decades, we have been getting more and more and more of that. And at the same time, uh, high school students, mental health in particular, uh, has been uh, getting worse and worse on the metrics that we look at. Um, and it makes me wonder if we are perhaps intervening at the wrong level. Uh, and I wonder whether you might take the theme of kindness, connection and community. Which we have been elevating in our multi-year strategic plan and, and see how that weaves through as a key element of mental health. And when you look at things like um, Aces in response to, to trauma and, and um. And, and other research-backed uh, approaches, often it is connection and community which support mental health. Um, and, and just whether there's, I mean, there's, there is some of that obviously built into some of the suggestions that, that you're uh, encouraging. But whether that is a lens you may want to bring to, to your approach.
Yes, of course. Thank you so much, Robbie, for that comment. Um, I think that definitely resonates with us and we can definitely look further into it. Um, this kind of reminded me of a conversation I had with a girl. Uh, she graduated last year. But I remember meeting up with her over the summer and I was asking her, you know, like what can we do to improve mental health within the school board? Because like that, I was just going into my term and I really wanted to know kind of her opinion. And she was saying that like, no matter how many resources we have, she finds that like none of her peers use them. Because they would rather deal with it by themselves, which I think, yes, that's such a big issue. Because there may be like mistrust that may be because of stigma, things like that. That's why we want to create like a mental health day across the board that can kind of also shine light to the resources. And teach students like how to interact with them and tell them like, it's okay and that uh, the stigma, you know. Isn't really like real. Um, well, I mean, it is real, but try to reduce it. But I do agree for sure that community plays such a big part in it. Like when we go to seek out, um. Now, support when you're struggling with your mental health, a lot of times that comes from like friends, that comes sure from school ball. So you know, from family and those other support systems. If we can make it more like school and have students. Reach out to like that school environment a bit more. I'm not sure how, that's definitely, you know, a very high pedestal to get up to. But um, yeah, we can definitely try to integrate that within our plan. Yes, of course.
Uh, I also especially resonated with your point. Um, sorry, this is a weird angle. Uh, I also really resonated with your point. Especially, um, like, I feel that, um, and like, feel free to jump in on this, but I feel that like. Um, one of our main issues in the youth, which contributes to negative mental health, is actually that individualism. And like the fact that we are becoming almost secluded from our social circles and from our community. So I think building that back into the mental health day is really, really important. And I've watched, I've watched so many lectures about that, so I really resonate with that. So thank you for bringing that up.
Just to add on, um, at my school, I go to Burlington Central High School. I'm a grade twelve student. We have a very active youth wellbeing team and we've seen um, far more success. In our um, like collective activities. We regularly host these events called Chill Zones about two times a month. And they are free activities for students to participate in. And our most popular ones are the ones where students are really connecting with each other. And they're really bettering their mental health without necessarily realizing it. Because that component of connection is so key. It's so critical to our actual, to our individual mental health. So while we do share resources that students are able to use and we do have more individual activities. Like white coloring, um, or spending time with like therapy dogs. Um, we do see far more success and far more connection with events like our Taylor Swift themed. Friendship bracelet making, um, which we held when like the era's tour was like incredibly popular. And cookie decorating and a board games day.
Thank you. I will move, oh, any thing more to ready?
Yes, I would also like to add on, on at the opposite end of Rachel's school situation. At my school, there are quite a number of students that aren't too aware of the ways and methods. That they can deal with their own mental health situations themselves. As I'm in grade eleven, there are a lot of like grade eleven students that are preparing for exams. We're like really getting close to exam season. And they're panicking, they don't really know what to do. And I feel that the mental health initiative really creates a sort of foundation for that community aspect. We set everyone a sort of even playing ground where you don't know mental health, you don't know how to deal with your mental health. Or you might know how to deal with your mental health, but everyone's going to learn strategies to deal with mental health themselves. And when everyone knows how to deal with their mental health issues themselves, which are unique to each person. Uh, then we can sort of go out and like helping everyone else and making sure that we, having that sort of co- community aspect. Cause we do want to make sure that everyone's like equipped to help someone out first before we just thrust them into helping everyone. When they don't even know what to help themselves.
Thank you. And we have one more speaker, Tanya.
Thanks through you Joanna. Um, so it's befitting that you're here in the month of May. Because May is Mental Health Awareness Month, so it's a nice tie-in. Um, I heard you say that over fifty percent of our schools have some sort of. Week or day that recognizes mental health. So at the end of the day, what is it that you're asking the board to do? What is you, what is it that you want to see happen? Do you want a day declared as today is Mental Health Day at the HDSB? Is it you want every school to get a half day? Um, so I'm trying to understand. What are you hoping to achieve across the school board? In like one sentence.
Thank you so much. Uh, just to clarify, we would like two days a year. One in every midterm season, so like November and April, May-ish. Um, like mandated for every single secondary school to have like one full day off. Dedicated to an event that would be called a mental health day.
Okay, thank you. And Robbie.
Um, a quick question to our superintendent of uh, in charge of secondary school programming. Uh, what would the trade-off be uh, in terms of uh, lost time in, in regular curriculum? If, if we were to mandate this uh, this sort of activity?
Uh, so through to the vice chair. Um, I don't know if I would think about it in terms of lost time. I think about when you identify what our students have shared in terms of what their learning needs are. Being able to approach mental health, um, and understand what that looks like in terms of the way that they function and operate and navigate what their academic lives are. And their personal lives are. This type of investment allows students then to re-engage and continue with their school work. Benefited by being able to manage their mental health and wellbeing. So it is still part of their learning program. It's still part of their way of understanding themselves and understanding how to engage not only in their academic life. But also how they manage their personal lives as well. So it's an investment in which it would not be lost time in my mind. But very much a gain in supporting their success in terms of their engagement and their achievement within the school.
Thank you very much for that. And we have a question from Amy for comment. Amy?
Yeah, thank you. Um, it, it's my understanding and I'm asking this just to clarify. Because I've heard some questions from trustees that um, kind of um. Muddy the waters for me a bit. This is an operational piece. So they, the student trustees and this um, committee wouldn't be asking trustees to approve anything. This would be something they would be taking straight to the director and to the senior team. To have implemented in the schools. Um, and its alignment uh, with the multi-year strategic plan for me. Is critical. Uh, I, I really applaud them for coming up with this idea. Which may not have been entirely one hundred percent an HDSB idea. But they always managed to take the kernel and make it into popcorn. So um, I'm, I'm really happy to see these uh, initiatives coming forward from the students. And um, wish you a lot of luck in how you negotiate this with the director.
Thank you so much, Amy. Um, before we move on, we have like a few things to add from our team.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, um, with regards to the uh, curriculum and like how like there would be like lost time. Um, I do agree with um, what uh, Superintendent Connor said. Um, about that it's not a loss, that it's actually um, a gain in student mental health and wellbeing. But also, um, I was talking with my vice principal about this event. And she shared with me that there is possibility to kind of create curriculum connections during the mental health day. You know, like connecting to like different courses and stuff like that, like um, and like being able to engage in learning in a way that's framed as like. As like, um, in, like in the frame of the mental health day. So she talked about like kind of incorporating everything. So in my opinion, it's more of like a web, like it's not just like either um, the academics or mental health, like it's both, it's a web. And I've looked over the um, the, the uh, parts of the curriculum for different courses and stuff like that. Um, during my time as, during my time in grade A, leading the mental health and wellbeing subcommittee in the student senate. And uh, when I looked over those curriculums, I noticed that they all had like little mental health integrations. And they were all like um, integrating mental health into the curriculum. So it would actually be like, kind of bringing that out of the curriculum and bringing it back up again. So I think that um, yeah, it would just be like, it would be more intermingling rather than like this or that.
Okay, uh, I'd also like to um, add that in the agenda that we featured on the presentation. There was space and time that could be used by students who felt the need. Um, to like finish up or catch up on homework or assignments that were assigned previously that they might not have been able to complete. So even if they didn't want to like engage in the activities of that period. They could use it to catch up on work. So we're still even then not losing any sort of curriculum or learning time.
Yeah, and finally, we made um, a handbook so that it could be flexible with administration. Whatever day they feel um, is beneficial to have a mental health day, like give or take a, a few weeks or a few days. They are able to have it on that certain day. So it's not like stringent or like one specific day, want to make it as flexible. Want to make it as flexible as possible, so it's as easy as possible for every single school to, um, have this in place.
I would just like to add that I had the youth wellbeing team at my school revise the handbook and provide their thoughts and input on whether or not this would be feasible. And they very much felt that this handbook was, um, a good starting place and that it was very supportive and provided all of the information that was necessary to accomplish such a large endeavor because though my youth, um, like my school's youth wellbeing team does have a day every year dedicated to mental health and it's a like voluntary field trip where we go on a hike around the Royal Botanical Gardens. By expanding the project to something that encompasses the whole school, not just the few students who decide to participate. Um, it's definitely a large undertaking and it's definitely a big ask of students, but we felt that the handbook supported and gave all the guidance that was necessary.
Okay, thank you very much. On behalf of trustees, I want to thank you for bringing this, um, initiative forward, for sharing all your work, uh, your findings with us. And, uh, you know, uh, kudos to you for, for consulting with administration and your peers and, and figuring out a way forward. Making this, um, easier, um, for your administration to absorb and possibly adapt. Uh, you've done a lot of the background work, which will make that a lot easier for them. And so thank you very much for your work and we look forward to, uh, learning where this takes you and takes the HDSB. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we will move on to our second presentation and that is a budget update with Roxana.
I feel like I need my crew with me after this one. So, uh, I'm just gonna put the presentation on the screen one second. I don't have a, a lot of updates as trustees know. Uh, as, uh, the grants have not yet been, um, released for the sector. Just give me one second. So we're just gonna go through just a few updates since the last presentation that we had, uh, in, uh, February. And I know there was a board report recently, uh, just where we are in terms of enrollment, some updates on revenues that are outside of the core education funding and, uh, where we are with the expenses. Uh, we're going to be looking at just, uh, what has been identified as some of the gaps we would like to address if possible in the next year. These are in no particular, um, priority order, but just what has been identified to date. And some of the next steps, we'll, we'll talk a little bit about timelines. So this is the original budget timeline just towards the end of the budget presentation. At this point in time for the budget process, I would have provided you with the draft budget, but we do not have that because we are missing the, the funds for the education, uh, sector. So given how late we are in the process, I understand that the ministry is prepared to provide, uh, an extension to school boards in terms of approval. Uh, as you know, uh, through, uh, regulation, we do have to, the board of trustees have to approve a balanced budget for the board by the end of June, but I believe that there will be an extension to the end of July. Uh, so I won't be able to really, uh, speak to the June dates, uh, here. They will move a little bit depending on when the grants get released, when the, when we have the details as well as the access to the ministry's financial information system, so we can put our, our data in. Um, but there is a very real chance that we'll need a special board meeting later in June or perhaps the beginning of July. We will not take till the end of July. So in terms of, uh, the, the budget itself, as you recall, trustees have approved a one point eight million deficit uh, for the current year, which has to be eliminated this year. Our initial uh, approach was a cautious approach to balancing the budget, uh, by making internal, uh, reallocations. Some, uh, reductions where we can, efficiencies, uh, we're running a transportation efficiency study. Uh, and looking at any areas of redundancies, uh, efficient staffing ratios and things that we can do to really contain costs. However, there are a number of uncertainties. As you know, there's, uh, cost implications, both in terms of, um, the impact on tariff wars, but also restrictions on US procurement, uh, focusing on, uh, Canadian vendors. And, uh, whether or not, uh, there is availability of certain, um, equipment, uh, that we use or technology licenses. There, there's a number of factors that may impact the cost for next year that we have not yet factored in. And we're not sure if the funding release will have any provisions to address any of that. So, uh, as trustees know, the, uh, Minister of Finance had, uh, has, uh, tabled the provincial budget on, uh, May fifteenth. There aren't a lot of details about the education sector itself within the budget, uh, report. What, uh, we do know is that the, the details are expected to be released within the coming days in accordance to the news release from the province. So I'm hoping either by the end of this week or by the end of next week that we will have those details. Uh, province-wide enrollment, uh, remains stable with just a slight increase of under one percent. Uh, the overall budget for the province was, uh, identified as forty-one billion. Uh, which is seven hundred and thirty-two million over the current year, but it's hard to tell exactly which part of this is the operating core education funding. Because this includes capital grants, uh, capital priorities that were approved for, uh, building new schools province-wide. Uh, as well as childcare spaces and so forth. So it doesn't tell us quite, uh, what to expect in terms of, um, growth. We do know that there is obviously benchmarks for compensation that will be built in. Um, overall, we are expecting this to not contain any drastic changes from the current year. Uh, but at the same time, it does not necessarily, um, look like it's going to contain additional funding to keep up with inflation. So what, it, it was released as the funding will be focused on supporting student achievement in the areas of reading, writing and math. Uh, continuing investments in educa, special education and, uh, providing, uh, childcare supports and spaces for families. So we do, uh, at this point, uh, are, uh, a bit concerned in terms of whether or not we will be able to balance the budget. Being just cautiously optimistic as we were planning. Uh, or if we're going to propose, the trustees consider the similar approach of um, a deficit budget for one-time items that we could look at eliminating a year, uh, from now. But in that case, we will need minister's approval once again. The, the important part is to not have, and I'll look at the, an in-year deficit, that's a structural deficit. So I think that that might be an option, but I, I couldn't tell you a lot of details before we see the grants. From an enrollment perspective, we do have a bit of an update. You, you have seen this in the board report as well. We are, uh, looking at the top, uh, part of this, uh, table is, uh, looking at the projection for next year compared to the revised budget projection, which is more accurate than the bottom, which is the original budget, just because we have a count date of October thirty-first, so we actually have the, the students, uh, in the seats. Uh, and we're looking at a decline in both panels for just over eleven hundred students. Year over year. From a revenue perspective, at this point, we can only speak to, uh, the revenue sources that are not uh, influenced by the provincial government or the provincial grants. Because they haven't been released and they make up about eighty-nine percent or so, or ninety percent of our funding, so. Um, what we have here are all the other sources of revenue, just to give you a bit of an update where we stand. Uh, as you can see, um, the federal grants are, um, staying sort of, uh, the same in terms of the language instruction for newcomers. Uh, school-generated funds, we don't, uh, really look at, um, uh, trends, which we just sort of look at the, the past, uh, spending and fundraising amounts. But they are budget neutral from the perspective of an operational compliance for the budget. Tuition fees are slightly down. Uh, we are not forecasting or projecting the growth that we expect at this point. We always look at the registrations received, so we're being very conservative. But there are a lot of efforts in terms of marketing, uh, and a student, uh, retention and attraction when it comes to the international student program as well. We're just not projecting until the students actually, uh, send us the registration. Rental revenues going up. Uh, the major change here you'll see is a decrease in the education development, the education development charges. That is an out-of-compliance item because it is the funding that we use to purchase sites. So really the difference between that is just showing that in the current year, we brought into revenue a lot more uh, revenue than we project for next year because we have a significant land transaction. That's really what it, it talks about. It's no implication in terms of lost revenue from an operating perspective. So, uh, with that, the overall changes in revenue is that twenty-nine million, as I mentioned, which is related mostly to the out-of-compliance item for education development charges. Looking at the, um, expenses, so we do, um, we are required to, um, report expenses by ministry category. These are the ministry categories. So instruction is everything that relates to school, uh, expenses. Uh, whether it's directly, uh, or indirectly in the classroom. Uh, staffing and, um, um, learning resources, technology used in the classroom and things like that. So staffing and non-staffing expenses. Um, so this is looking at an increase which captures increases in compensation and grid movements for staff which have been centrally negotiated and we expect that those would be funded. Um, and that sort of carries where the staffing is involved throughout administration, transportation, pupil accommodation, which refers really to school, uh, operations. So it's the ground, uh, maintenance and the, uh, school maintenance and repairs. Uh, and then school-generated funds, we, we keep it flat. Um, and then other expenses is lower year over year, just because there are a number of, um, one-time items in the education funding that haven't been released, so we don't know if they're going to continue next year, so we just took them off for now. Uh, the next slide, it just gives you a little bit more details in terms of what those, uh, various increases are in terms of compensation. And, um, so salary and benefits and other type of expenses, so it's breaking it a little bit differently, just so you have a bit of, uh, uh, an understanding. Um, so as I mentioned, from a compensation perspective, grid movements and compensation increases through collective agreements. Uh, we have an increase, of course, in statutory holiday, in statutory, um, benefits and insured benefits. Um, and, uh, there are some staffing changes which relates to the decline in enrollment, so there is a decrease in staff that are based on staffing ratios. Uh, from a non-staffing perspective, we are looking at increases in, uh, operating and maintaining, um, the schools, um, and our contractual, uh, and legal obligations. So the increases year over year, we are opening a new school, so that's factored in there as well. It also captures, uh, about one point six million. Saving, uh, I guess, in, um, utilities as a result of the carbon tax, uh, elimination. So that's already factored into that number. Transportation is going up. In that, we also have Polly Fisher, uh, move to Pearson for one year. So there's a one-time cost of almost four hundred thousand in there, so I just wanted to, to point that out. Um, so those are the, the most notable, uh, changes that I would mention at this point in terms of the, uh, expenses. This is a look at, uh, proposed staffing for next year. As I mentioned, there's a reduction of staff. Uh, and it is, uh, related to enrollment declines and looking at being efficient with our staffing, um, ratios. Um, and there's a, there's a number of, uh, with respect to, um, just looking at educational assistance, for example, those were one-time additions in the revised budget, so we can help the system, so they, they are coming off the base next year, but the, the base, it would be the same without that one-time addition that we had in November this year. Otherwise, uh, the changes are, uh, based on enrollment decline. And so there's some, as I mentioned, there's some additions that are proposed. Whether or not we would be well, uh, able to include some of them, we would have to see. Um, we are still looking, uh, to make sure that what we do include would be budget neutral. We've identified some revenue offset for some of these items, as you can see there. Uh, whether it's a sweatered grant or whether we've, uh, reallocated funding from a different part in the budget. Some of them would be, uh, covered. Uh, they are in just alphabetical order, not priority order at this point, but this just gives you a little bit of an idea of what the team has identified of some of the areas of gaps that we would like to address next year, if it would be possible. Uh, and so those would be permanent additions and these would be one-time, uh, additions. And you'll see, uh, right there, the educational assistance one-time, uh, uh, addition back to support a system if we would be able to, um, reinstate those positions that you saw on the staffing slide that were coming off. All right, and I think that just other considerations, again, we continue to look at the, the budgets and make sure that we repurpose everything that we have based on where our priorities are and, and try to be as cautious as we can in order to balance the budget without making significant changes for next year. And, uh, in terms of the dates I mentioned at the beginning, we are, uh, going to be looking at pushing the dates for a draft budget. So these dates here will now be met considering that we are already towards the end of May. And we don't have, uh, a significant half of our budget, uh, equation. So, uh, as soon as we, we have the release of the core education funding, we will be looking at potentially moving or, uh, uh, the board meeting, uh, if we can, or setting, uh, special board meeting. We do, um, we were still planning to go to CAC on June fourth and present the information we do have and break down the expenses and staffing that are related to special education and mental health and wellbeing. Um, and have an opportunity for the committee to provide some feedback before we have a draft budget. So I'd be happy to take any questions.
Okay, and we have Robbie.
Thank you. A couple of questions. Um, first off, the, the proposed additions are not reflected in the proposed staffing slide, is that correct? Okay. Um, secondly, um, the, the largest item in the non-salary decreases, um, is responsive education programs and secondments. Could you speak a little bit to what that is and why it's going down so sharply?
Yes, so the responsive education programs and secondments are, uh, fully funded, uh, one-time, uh, grants. They haven't been announced yet, so if they had a limited investment and they end at the end of this current year, we took them off for next year. Um, I assume some of those, most of those will be announced with the core education funding will be adding them back in. It will be budget neutral because you add the expense, but you have the, the revenue as well.
And Jean.
Thank you very much. Um, I heard, uh, from a school today that they rely very heavily on, applications that they make for different grants. So when our schools apply for different grants and have that money come in, does it appear on, uh, would it be on the, um, line called other fees and revenues or would it be under school-generated funds?
I'm, I'm just, uh, trying to think. I do have our manager, uh, of budget online as well, but it depends on what it is. I, so I would think it, it would be in other, um, fees and revenue if it's not, uh, related. related, like if it doesn't come from the provincial government, for example, like if it comes from an agency or something like that, then yes. If it comes through a donation, then it could go through school generated funds, but I do see that Lisa has her her hand up.
Go ahead, Lisa.
I was just gonna second and say that most of the time when schools are speaking to it, they're talking about a donation from an agency and that would be found in school generated funds. Alternatively, if it's specifically something government-related, it's in other revenue.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Roxana at this point? Margo?
Mine is, I guess, more of a comment than a question because really I don't know that there's much, because we don't know where we are and where the cuts are going to be. But I know you're talking about being very conservative and being very fiscally responsible and when we meet again and you have the final numbers, I would like to know where the cuts are going to be focused on. So who's who's missing out? So when we make cuts or we have to be creative, at whose cost are we being creative for? And when we look at this and we look at the idea of, because at the end of the day, my impression is, is that the largest cost is to our students because they lose out on programming or they lose out on support in the classroom or they lose out on whatever they need to have a financial, or sorry, a successful education. So I think for me, what I really, I need to know, because again, as I said to you last year, I will, I do not want to support creative because I think by continuing to support creative, we are continuing to say to the government, we can, we can deal with cuts. We're okay with these cuts. So I really, I really want to dig into who's losing, like, and it sounds harsh, but I think we really need to focus on, not necessarily, although we're losing two or three EAs, what does that mean to our student population? Do you understand what I mean? Thank you. It was just a comment, not a question. So you don't need to say anything today.
Okay, thank you. And Robbie.
Thank you. A couple of thoughts. I see that two of the items in the proposed permanent additions are are labeled as having offsetting revenue. They are items that for me would be high priorities and I am glad to see that there are revenue items marked for them that they may be able to come through regardless of our funding situation. Under the other considerations slide, the first bullet on seeking increased revenues is increasing rental revenues and promoting community use of empty spaces. I I am a supporter of having greater communities use of our spaces generally, whether it makes revenue or not, that our schools be community hubs. To the extent that it's net rep being positive for us, fantastic. Let's do a double ESO. My question is, is there anything that staff needs from the board in terms of a policy statement or a risk appetite statement to enable you to pursue that?
The support is always welcome. Thank you for that question. Certainly, understanding what your risk appetite is as a board in terms of being creative is very helpful in in our outreach for engagement and trying to be as creative as we can with some of the classroom spaces or, you know, empty spaces where we can bring in community partners. There are, however, some restrictions. So we do have a recovery fee, regular recovery fee that we're looking at in terms of rentals. We coordinate that with our tournament board and the municipalities respectively in trying to provide that for the community. And then depending on what groups would like to use it and the space and whether or not it's conducive to their needs, but also aligned with our values. So there are some restrictions that we do have. We've been working very closely with our municipal partners in, they do, we have a reciprocal agreement with all municipalities in terms of rentals for our spaces. So we work closely with them as well. Not sure if that answers your question, but certainly we welcome the feedback from the board in terms of your risk appetite for being creative or not as creative or flexible with with our outreach.
Okay, I don't see anybody else on the list. So thank you very much, Roxana, for this update. And we'll move on to consent agenda. For approval, we have the minutes of the committee of the whole from April 22nd. I'll put the motion on the floor. It resolved that the board approved the consent agenda action items listed on the May 20th, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting Agenda. Margo, would you like to move the motion to deal with the consent agenda?
Yep.
Are there any, does this item need to be pulled for discussion? Are there any objections to approving this item? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved by unanimous consent. And move on to agenda item 5.0, and that's discussion items. And our first is a report on information, shortlist of names for Oakville Northeast Number Three Public School. And that's Heather Frenzy and Roseanna, Dr. Roseanna Vishaglia. Welcome, Heather and Roseanna.
Thanks, everyone. Oakville Northeast Number Three Public School will open in September as a kindergarten to grade eight school. To name this new school, a school naming committee was established in accordance with the HDSB naming and renaming schools administrative procedure, the school naming and renaming policy, and the school naming and renaming governance procedure. We gathered student and community input in accordance with these procedures and shortlisted potential names for the school. A promotional campaign was conducted to gather input from the community and more than 1,000 names were submitted through this process. After reviewing all of the submissions and meeting as a committee to engage in discussion, the naming committee puts forth the following shortlist of names for the new school, four trustees to consider. Alvin Duncan Public School, Chow Kuen Lee Public School, Harvest Oak Public School and Wheat Boom Public School. Research and the committee's rationale for selecting these names is included in the report. The report is presented for discussion this evening and will come back for decision at the June 3rd board meeting. And Roseanne and I are happy to take any questions.
Okay, are there any questions or comments for Heather and Roseanna? Margo?
Thanks, Roseanne. So mine, I don't know, is only for you, but it would also be for members of the committee that met with the students, the parents and everything. What was their thoughts in terms of the shortlist? Was there a clear frontrunner? Was there, or were they all equally liked?
The committee was comfortable with all names in the shortlist, but perhaps if the trustees on the committee want to provide additional feedback?
Sure. So I did sit on the committee because I am the trustee for the, for Northeast Number Three. The impression that I got from attending the meetings is I think they were leaning towards Harvest Oak. Because it did represent, the word harvest gives a sense of reaping and it's almost like you reap what you sow. So if you can relate that back to education, we're, we're sowing seeds in our, in our students and then there's a reaping of knowledge. So, but the word harvest, they also said was a term that knows no boundaries. Every culture, every group of people can identify with the term harvest. And in further speaking with other people in the community since this report has gone out, so far, the feedback I've received is people are leaning towards Harvest Oak. Because it does give you a sense of celebration, of gathering, of happiness, and there's a positive attribute to the word harvest. And funnily enough, I was at Iroquois Ridge High School and Northeast Number Three is very close to Iroquois. And I was in the careers and civics class this morning and I did a mock vote with them. So I read them the report, gave them the background. And we had a little voting session and they too opted for for Harvest Oak. So I'm going to go back off the, I wasn't on the speaker's list, but I'll let other people speak and then I'll add some more to it.
Thanks for that, Tanya. I just think it's really important, although this is our decision that we, we try to ensure that we're reflecting the what the community wants, because I think that is something that's really important, ensuring that we are hearing the voices. So thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Margo, for the question. And Tanya, thanks for providing that background and the information from the committee. Next on the list is, Tanya, or do you want to pass on to Jean?
I'll pass it on to Jean.
Okay, Jean and then Tanya.
Thank you very much. I just have a question of process here. One of the proposed names, the person has been deceased for 16 years and the other proposed name, the person's been deceased for eight years. Is there going to reach out to their respective families to see if they're okay with their names being used for a school?
Thank you for the question. And yes, both families have consented for the names to be put forth. For Alvin Duncan, we were able to connect with his daughter. And for Chow Kuen Lee, we were able to connect with two of her sons.
Okay, thank you. And Tanya.
Sorry, Robbie, you can go ahead.
Robbie.
Question, my tiny snippet of reading, and I'm no expert by any stretch of the imagination. When I looked up the phrase wheat boom, it tended to refer to the 1890s through 1910s period when expansion was happening through the prairie provinces, whereas Oakville's wheat boom, if you will, was in 1850s. And I'm just wondering if there's any confusion brought about by this name, understanding that this is going to be the name of the street and and naming it after the street will be okay.
Yeah, thank you for raising that, Robbie, because we hadn't realized that discrepancy until you did. So I don't have any historical evidence to speak to that at this time, but I did, I did have the opportunity to reach out to the Oakville Historical Society to attempt to clarify that. So I will share that once I hear back with trustees and ideally that'll be before the June 3rd meeting. So what we have asked the Historical Society to confirm is that the use of, to Robbie's point, the term wheat boom, if it is, if there's any, if they have any historical evidence to support using that to, in reference to Oakville's wheat producing past, given that the term, as Robbie mentioned, is typically used in reference to another period of time in another region of Canada and the Prairies.
And one separate point. We, it is not a death sentence, but we do have River Oaks, West Oak and White Oaks already within the board. And adding a Harvest Oak would add to the list of number of oaks that we can confuse ourselves what school we are talking about. There is a reason that there are so many oaks around.
Certainly a lot of oaks, yes. The committee did have an opportunity to look at all of our existing school names. And the committee didn't, didn't identify any concerns of confusion or anything with the existing school names.
Thank you for that clarification. And now, Tanya.
So to Robbie's point, with the word oak, you know, it's an Oakville school. So the other, Robbie touched upon, I think, the fourth suggestion, which was Wheat Boom. And that is because the school will have the address Wheat Boom Drive. I did reach out to the town of Oakville on why did they name Wheat Boom? The rationale they gave me was that, and I'm going to read what they wrote, Wheat Boom Drive was selected to commemorate the wheat harvest, harvest, that once took place in this area of Oakville. So if you were to drive in the neighborhood where Wheat Boom Drive is, another reason why I would support Harvest Oak is that there are other street names that pay tribute to the wheat boom. So there are words like Threshing Mill Boulevard and there's Granary Street. So adding Harvest Oak, it almost like unifies the neighborhood where there's a theme and a nod to to history. So I think, I think that was all that I wanted to add to the name.
Thank you very much for that information, Tanya. Okay, any final comments or questions? Seeing none. Thank you very much for this presentation and we'll see you back at the board meeting. Okay, and now on to standards for student attire policy, and that is with Jennifer Fowler. Thanks.
Good evening. Thank you, everyone. This is before you. It is a revised policy. This policy has been through quite a bit of consultation. It went through all of our school councils. It was sent out broadly. We also followed up with various advisory committees that support the board's work and it is in front of you. We we did have sort of a last minute suggestion, which I am going to acknowledge now. And I think it's a really great one. And so thank you, Tanya, for this. But we're, we're just going to call it student attire. But I felt that by the time it was in the package, going through and editing everything last minute, I'd probably missed something. So just wanted to give you that heads up that we're going to just call it the student attire board policy. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. And we have a question from Amy.
Hi, it's not a question. I just want to thank you very much for changing the name and and even furthermore to shortening it since Tanya made her suggestion. I love that idea. I, I think it's really important for people in the public to understand that this is for student attire. And I like that we've taken the word dress out and used the word attire. It's more descriptive of what the policy is actually discussing. So yes, I am very happy with what I see here in the revised policy. Thanks.
Thank you, Amy. And we'll go to first time speaker, Shanee.
Thank you. I believe a policy, this is, when we, once we have a policy, this policy should set clear direction for further procedures and guidelines. Our board and we have code of conduct for students and also the schools, I saw a lot of schools, they post the dress code online. Once we have this policy, so all the dress code maybe need amendment to follow this, this policy. So as a policy, I like to know what direction we set for further guidelines. Because this is just to say, we have the human rights, human rights code and also the students can learn and all these things. I don't see any practical for further guidelines. I can compare this, this policy with the policy from the York region. So the York region, they set, they, they define the roles, the responsibility for trustees. In this policy, what trustees can do and what is the school staff should do and what school council should do. And at York Region, actually, the policy gave the power to the school council to do the dress code, something like that. But for this policy, I don't see what, what is the direction. But for this policy, I don't see what, what is the direction. And also, I did some research. In Ontario, one of the school board, actually, they have the guideline, the dress code guideline. They allow students to show shoulders and chest. So I'm not sure what kind of decency we should allow the students should do and what is in practice. Thank you.
So it sounds like you're looking for a direction or directives that specify exactly the type of clothing. I will bring your attention to the policy statement, point two, in the Student Attire Board Policy, which states that HDSB principals, in consultation with their school council, staff, and students, shall determine attire standards for their students. And the rest you can read for yourself. Jennifer, would you like to add anything to that?
Yeah, I think just to add in that there is an accompanying admin procedure, which will follow. Once this has been approved, it will be revised as well. And that would set out some more specifics. And then even beyond that, we do have information that would go to students and families publicly through communications. So whether it's, we currently have a poster on our website that sort of speaks to what we do allow and don't allow. And so you get further granularity and specifics as you move in, but the policy is really just the, this part here. And I'd be happy to take a look at the York District School Board if that's a recommendation. I can certainly look at that. Thank you.
Okay, Margot, are you on the list?
I am.
Okay, I think you were, you were. Yeah, go ahead.
Thanks. And I'm struggling because I thought I saw something, maybe I was dreaming, but I, there was something, and I might be because I'm mixing this up with the safe, the next policy, which is safe and accepting schools. And I do see a lot of overlap in these policies. But one of the things that I was looking at, and I can't remember where I saw it, was about feeling safe, for students to feel safe. And I'm actually going to go off the speakers list because I need to try to find what I saw, because I can't find it right now, but I'll come back. Thanks.
Sure. While you're Luke, we'll go to Charlie.
Thank you, and through you, Vice Chair. I like to read an excerpt from point three guiding principles. Students have a right to learn in a safe and caring space as free of bias, hate, discrimination, and harassment. In my school, and from what I've seen from youth on social media, there is a sort of growing, how do I say this, not sort of hate, but concern about wars that are happening all over the world, that could be Israel and Palestine. And I would like to ask, how are we sort of defining bias, hate, discrimination, harassment? Because while something might be hateful to one person, it might be sort of acceptable to another person, especially in the context of a war, or the context of like antisemitism. Because I've seen a lot around my school that in protesting for one side or another, you might sort of find yourself in the waters of hating the other side, or making it seem that you do, even though maybe you didn't intend for it to be that way. And I think that might be a huge, that might come up on the dress code in our schools.
Yes, thank you, Charlie. Absolutely, I think that our principals and vice principals do a really great job in navigating those unique scenarios and situations. So again, this is a policy that is very much overarching. And it does allow principals the opportunity to engage in the dialogue in order to navigate those challenging situations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie, for that question. And on to Carol.
Thank you, through the Vice Chair. I just have a question about the reasoning behind the policies being set per school as opposed to at a board level. Just understanding that there are students who sometimes have to go to other schools for various reasons or transfer. So is there any logic around continuity or having expectations across the board? Or why are, and I guess are there any examples in which one school might differ from another in a way that would be impactful for students? Thanks.
Great, thank you. Carol, absolutely, I would say that these are the overarching policy pieces. And our AP as well would set out clearly defined things that all schools would adopt. The reason that it is sort of part of a school council decision or individual school decision is actually it's embedded right in the Ministry of Regulations state that that's why we have to have that ability. But I will say that the majority of the differences would really only lie in the desire to perhaps consider uniforms, for example. So if you look at our AP, again, everything really much is very much aligned, school to school, school. Same with the poster that we have as a board. But then where it could differ is if there is a certain threshold of parents and guardians and people in the community that are looking to perhaps consider adopting a dress code. So that's where the flexibility would come in, for sure.
Thank you. And Margot.
Thanks, John. And I'm just closing the loop because Charlie asked the exact question that I was going to ask. And I really appreciate, I don't want to say the great minds think alike, because this is not the first time that we've had that sort of synergy. So thank you, Charlie, for asking the question that I wanted to ask and finding the piece of information.
Thanks, Margot. So just a quick, I need to clarify this for myself. So in the policy statement, principals in consultation with school council, staff, and students will determine the standards for the attire. And what you're saying is that where the uniqueness could come in is something on the positive front, maybe like a uniform. What is there, with every school determining its own kind of what the standards might be, is there going to be kind of a look over to make sure that there is not a lot of deviation between the different schools, the other options like uniforms put aside? I'm talking about just looking at, you know, regular clothes. Will somebody be looking to see if, because we don't want to run into, you know, where one school, they allow this, but in this school, they don't allow that, right? How will that be handled?
So again, I, having, like, we worked extensively with principals and vice principals across the board when we developed these, developed the policy and the feedback, schools stick to what we, what we have. And I can assure you that there won't be differences, like in one school, you're allowed to wear something that doesn't align with ours. And this is where I speak about the poster. And it will be, you know, very specific about what, as a board, we do allow. And even in that policy statement, it talks about the standards are reflective of the HDSB's board values. And so I don't, I haven't experienced anyone really deviating from that, unless they are looking to have conversations related to uniforms. That's really the only time we're seeing a difference.
Okay, that's great. Thank you very much. And you are up for the next item, and that's safe and accepting schools policy.
Thank you so much. So this one is before you, and some changes, just minor ones here and there, some additional policies and regulations that were influencing it. But overall, I really appreciate the feedback and the dialogue that we've had. And it's before you, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, any questions for Jennifer? Shanee?
Thank you. So again, my question about the guiding principle. We know in Canada, we have the laws, and in Ontario, we have Human Rights Code. And we, all the school board operation is under Education Act. Law is law. So once we have the law, and we, everyone must follow this law to satisfy this law, otherwise this is a violation. And once we have the law, and so the guiding principle is just to say, we have Ontario Human Rights Code, and we have Education Act. So what actual information we can provide in this guiding principle? Otherwise, this is just to repeat the same thing in the, already in the law. We have law in place. So I don't, I think this is like redundancy. And for school operation, actually, we can have a lot more detail specific for our school board and school operation, and make it more practical to guide further guidelines and procedures. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll take that into consideration, for sure.
Thank you. Next speaker, Carol.
Thank you, through the Vice Chair. I have a question about the reference to the Charter of Rights and Freedoms. I've had some parents contact me who have interpreted the rights of community members and students to freedom of expression and peaceful assembly in the context of political activism. And specifically, I had one parent who pointed out that this particularly applies in public institutions such as schools. But we have, as a board, and I guess all boards, have sort of grappled with this in the last couple of years, and come to the decision that there are other obligations of school boards that have to balance with the Charter of Rights and Freedoms. And I'm just wondering if there's any space in this policy to clarify that balance, that boards have to strike? That would maybe answer some of those questions or provide a resource to trustees and staff when sort of grappling with those kinds of issues. I took the AusGood certificate in human rights, I think it was last year or the year before, and there were a lot of case studies. And one that came up really touched on that sort of competing obligations, I guess, or requirements that boards have to provide safe and accepting schools and inclusive environments, but also obviously adhere with the law and the hierarchies that come into play. And it's complicated, obviously, that's why lawyers work in that area. But there was one example given around symbolism that, I guess it was a practical example from the school, in which there was some symbolism that someone was displaying in their car in the parking lot of the school. And for that person, it was supportive of law enforcement. But for some students in the school, it was seen as intimidating. And so where it kind of came out in terms of school board direction is the priority is on inclusiveness for everyone. And so I'm just wondering, as I said, if there's any place in here where we could sort of add some language that would not answer every question, obviously, because no policy can do that, but highlight for community that boards do have multiple responsibilities, and that sometimes one, you know, you've got the list, one thing, like the Charter of Rights and Freedoms, or the Human Rights Code, cannot supersede all the other obligations. I'm not wording that well. Obviously, I wouldn't write it. But I'm just wondering if there's some space or some consideration, since we're in the review period, if we could add some language or if that's been discussed. Sorry, that was a very long question.
It's okay. I think I got the gist, and I can always go back and watch this again if I need to. But thank you. And I just think it is something that I can take back and try to, if there's a way to maybe wordsmith something in there, I'd be happy to do so.
Thank you for that. Any more questions or comments on this topic for Jennifer? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Jennifer. And we will move on to French second language programs with Superintendents Connor and Frankovich. Welcome, Tara and Nick.
So in addition to working with department staff, Superintendent Connor and I worked with trustees, Bryden, Rocha, and Zhang, on the Governance Committee to come up with the policy before you. There was great input and discussion that influenced what was included in both the administrative procedure and the policy we are discussing tonight. There is one change that was made after the revised agenda was posted, and it is simply a swap of the language under the policy statement and guiding principles. So what is currently under, what you would see under policy statement will be moved to guiding principles. And what you see right now under guiding principles will be moved to the policy statement section. And we are happy to take any questions or comments.
I don't see anybody on the list. Oh, Amy, go ahead.
Can I just say, I love the simplification of the language in this policy. It's so much easier to read, and I think that's always a good thing. So I appreciate the work that's gone into this. Thanks.
I do have a question or a comment, I guess. I'm looking at the guiding principles, point C, acknowledging that every student can succeed in French class. That is absolutely an important guiding principle. I'm just wondering about the phrasing of that, because it's not enough to acknowledge. It's the action verbs, right, that we need to support the students. So maybe it's more around supporting different learners or supporting every student while acknowledging that every student can, what do I mean? That every student can succeed. But it's the support that might be differentiated, because every student comes to learning a second language in a different way, different manner, and they'll have their own unique profiles. So while we acknowledge that every student can succeed in French class, what do we do to make sure that they succeed?
Thanks. I think we'll tag team this one. So Vice Chair Oliver, we get into more detail in the accompanying administrative procedure, because what we wanted to see was a shift from a jump to exemptions in core French, for example, in elementary, and Superintendent Connor could speak to it in secondary. And so that's outlined in greater detail in the AP.
Okay, I'm not seeing anybody else on the list. Thank you very much for that clarification. And we will move on to the next item. Thank you very much. And that is procurement policy with Superintendent Nagoy. Thank you, Roxana.
And there are just a couple of changes suggested to the procurement policy. And they have to do with the board motion regarding response to tariffs, as well as the preference to be given to local, Ontario, and Canadian vendors. And also making reference of the procurement restriction policy that the province has issued since. Happy to take any questions.
I don't see anybody on the, oh, Carol.
Thank you, through the Vice Chair. One thing that I noticed is missing, and maybe it was part of an earlier discussion, is any reference to value, given, to value for money, given that we spend a lot of time talking about the limitations to our budget. I don't know if that's assumed to be a given, or if it was in the policy and removed at some point. But at, at the end of the day, I think reality is that the board has limited funds and has to provide a certain level of education and facilities for students. And sometimes, although we aspire to certain things, I would imagine that sometimes it just comes down to cost. And I'm wondering if that should be reflected in the, in the policy statement. Thank you.
So the value for money is all part of the broader sector procurement directive requirements, but that doesn't mean that we can add it to some of the guiding principles as well. It is mentioned in the procurement administrative procedure.
And I have, I guess, more of a comment, and I'm going to try and, trying to verbalize this. Has thought been given to how different, so first of all, I'm very pleased to see the emphasis on local and Ontario and Canadian vendors and businesses. I also recognize that some businesses do things a little bit. I also recognize that some businesses do things a little bit differently, that practices might have shifted. And I remember a number of years ago, a local business not being considered in our vendors list because of their business practices. So for example, there was a requirement that the vendor had to have a supply, you know, X number of whatever you wanted to order already on the shelf. I don't know what that's called. And and their practice was different in that they could procure this stuff very quickly. It didn't have to sit on the shelf waiting for us to place an order. Once the order came, they could procure it. And so I imagine businesses update their practices and methods and how they do things. Have we adapted as well to that?
So a couple of thoughts. The vendor of record process is renewed every few years, but also there's a process in between where additions can be made. So if we have vendors that come to us and want to be considered to be added to a vendors of record, they could do so between the cycles as well as a one off. Certainly, that would, the vendor of record is looking for qualified vendors on certain perspectives. The administrative procedure does, however, have a consideration for smaller local businesses and vendors as well as a different process for indigenous vendors. So we have different practices that we we keep in mind that we we want to engage with the local community and businesses and indigenous community. And we do so by adapting to their inventory availability depending on size, but also to the ways of the indigenous community and how they engage in business transactions.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Carol?
Sorry, to the vice chair, I almost forgot. I had a question in four F. Sort of the last, the the last part of it says that vendors are expected to respect all protected grounds under the Ontario Human Rights Code. I'm just wondering in terms of simplifying the language, if it should just say to comply with the Ontario Rights Code? Human Rights Code? I mean, it is law. So I think our expectation is that all vendors have to comply with the law. They don't have to respect the protected grounds. They have to actually. And it makes it clear that I think if we had a vendor who had been sanctioned or had gone before the Ontario Human Rights, oh my gosh, tribunal, thank you. And has been found to infringe on the code, that we would consider that a reason to discontinue operations if that wasn't rectified. So I'm just wondering about, we often talk about simplifying language, just to make it clear that that's not up for discussion. Compliance with law is mandatory.
We can certainly simplify the languages.
Okay, thank you. And Roxana Roxana is staying on for trustee expense policy.
So the policy has been updated in the new template. Guiding principles have been added as well. So there's a few changes and also the definitions. Thank you for the comments that we received from trustees since we'll we'll make those changes. Will be sort of removed at this point and will make reference to the the document does contain the overall definitions. I think that would address that point. So other than that, I'll take, I guess, any questions. There's more changes in the next item that we want to talk about.
Okay, any questions on this item, Donna?
Thank you. I hope this is the right spot to raise the next one. Never mind. I'll go on the list for the next one. Thank you. I find it confusing the way they're saying that.
Any questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, let's move on to trustee expense governance procedure.
Thank you. And in working with the governance subcommittee, there are some changes. I'm just going to go on with the truck changes here. There were some changes suggested to the trustee expenses governance procedure. Again, making reference to preference being given to local Ontario and Canadian vendors as we discussed in the prior item, as well as some emphasis on travel, some travel restrictions. You know, looking at most economical way for travel accommodations, for example, as well as considering some restrictions, whether they're outside, right now they're outside the province of Ontario or any other restrictions that the trustees would consider. Some exceptions that were noted were with regards to the Canadian School Board Association and National School Board Association conferences. And I believe those were the main changes other than some references and happy to take questions. Thank you.
Okay, Donna?
Thank you very much. And I'm going to speak to the the last point that you made, the change that you made on page sixty eight. It's item three point one six. On page seventy six, it's item three point one six. Travel outside the province of Ontario, with the exception of attending CSBA or NSBA, must be pre-approved with the board. I'm really struggling with this on a number of reasons. I think our board meetings are waiting up. We're already forty five minutes behind on this one. Can you imagine if we have to start bringing motions every time we want to attend a conference outside of Ontario? I, but I also, I like that you are reflecting the current political climate that we are living in. My concern is that it has been restricted to just Ontario, when there are some absolutely amazing Canadian content conferences available, educationally speaking. And just out of a few, the Canadian Association for Communicators and Education. I still use the notes for my first term in that particular conference that I went to. It's always a great agenda. Capsule on specifically around dealing with legal issues within the education system. Shaping the Future, the ULED Council for School Leadership, First Nation Education Steering Conference, the Alberta Rural Education Forum, which again provides such an amazing governance overview. I'm absolutely struggling with the fact that if I wanted to attend any of these, I have to ask my colleagues for permission. I'm not sure that's what we want to be doing with our time. I would suggest maybe changing this wording to travel outside of the country of Canada. Because I definitely think once we're leaving Canada, particularly as we're looking at tariffs and things like that, that does send a very strong message. So that, I don't know what my fellow colleagues think. But that, to me, that's a really easy one because again, there are so many incredible conferences and I don't want us to be bogged down continually on these kind of motions that are coming forward and the discussion of it. And then then you get into personal, we don't know what kind of board is going to be elected in twenty twenty six. But this is a wonderful board to work with. The next one may not be. I have had that experience in the past where I didn't vote the way people thought I should vote on something. And three months later, they turned down one of my motions just because it came from me. I've seen that happen. We don't know what's going to happen. So that's why I would feel more comfortable if it was the country of Canada rather than the province of Ontario. I think that still keeps in with our Canadian framework, our elbows up and the anti-tariffs and everything that we're trying to do that. Now, I personally question the National School Association. I think that's been a great conference, but I I think that would be one I think should. I think anything outside of Canada should require maybe bringing it to the board, but that's just my thoughts. And I did have another point, but I will go back on the speaker's list.
And the next up is Margo.
Hi, thank you. I actually, I I disagree with Donna. So I I do think that if it is, we are an Ontario school board, so there is quite a bit of expertise within Ontario. That's not to say that we don't go outside of Ontario, but I I do think that there should be a discussion if we are going further, if you're spending that more money. Just to check it off, just to have that box checked. I just look at what's going on within boards right now. I think we need to be accountable to how we're spending our money, particularly in the area of travel. Thank you.
Next up, Amy.
Thank you. Yes, I agree with Donna on removing the National School Board Association. I I used to attend this conference several, well, I guess a decade ago. I've very infrequently returned because I find that a lot of their content is behind what we are already doing and halted. So I I have not been attending recently. So I would think that that one could be removed and is also in the spirit of the tariffs. As as to the other conferences that Donna mentioned, I agree those are excellent conferences. But I also agree with Margo that, you know, can we try and find those things in Ontario? So I'm kind of struggling as much as Donna is. I I I think I think we could leave that part being the province of Ontario with the exception of CSBA and removing NSBA, I think would make sense.
Okay, thank you, Amy. Does anybody want to reflect on that? Before we move on to the next speaker? Okay, moving on to Tanya.
So continuing education is is important for trustees. And I think the spirit of the change is really to reflect on where an Ontario school board, we need to examine what skill sets we can learn and use in our board. And I think as trustees, we do have to be fiscally responsible, especially in today's climates where, you know, some boards are under investigation for maybe abusing how funds are being spent. So we've been great. I think trustees around the table are very wise in the decisions they make as far as what conferences they attend. So I think at the end of the day is, we're not saying you can't go. It's a matter of sharing your wish to attend a conference, maybe in British Columbia, but saying this is how this conference is going to help me in my role as a trustee. I mean, I can go to a lot of conferences and learn a lot of skill sets, but at the end of the day, I need to be learning something that is applicable to my role. Yes, it's more work for me to write a report and ask the ten of you to say, please approve my trip to British Columbia so I can attend conference X. But I think if we're all of the same mindset that my intention is to go to learn, my intention is to bring that skill set and apply it around the board table, then as one of eleven, I need to defer to my fellow trustees and trust that you'll make the right financial decision. So I'm okay with Ontario's good and outside of Ontario. You know, ask, ask your fellow trustees.
Thank you. And moving on to Carol.
Thank you through the vice chair. Tanya, I think you articulated it quite well, so I won't repeat what you said. I also wanted to ask about this section because I'm not understanding the exemption for the National School Board Association Conference. Given that it's, I had to look it up because I actually didn't know what it was. But given that it's an American conference and schools are legislated very differently in the US, I'm not really sure why that would be exempted. I can understand the Canadian School Board Association because my assumption is that there's learning from other provinces that can be valuable, assuming they have school boards in the way that we do. So not sure I would necessarily make that as an exception. I think the idea of coming to the board, which is not a personal judgment on anyone's decisions around conferences or professional development, in my mind, it's about transparency to the public because we are authorizing public funds to be spent for a trustee to travel, which is by its very nature more expensive when you have to leave the province. And I agree with Tanya that the act of me bringing a motion to the board to explain why I need to go to BC helps to be transparent with the public as to why I want their tax dollars spent for me to bring value back to the board. So I think it's a good exercise and it helps to increase that confidence that the public has in us. So I would be in favor of removing the National School Board Association at minimum, potentially the other one. But but do agree that anything outside of the province of Ontario should be, should come to the board, not for any personal judgments, but for that oversight that I think the public expect of us.
Thank you for those comments. And I think there is a general agreement that NSBA could be removed from the list. Okay, moving on to Margo.
Thank you. So for you, Joanna, and this question's for Curtis. I know that one of the benefits that trustees have from going to these conferences is going alongside staff and building the relationships with staff. So I'm just wondering, I know staff have access to these conferences as well. What are the moving forward protocols for staff in terms of attendance at conferences such as NSBA?
Similar to the comments that have been expressed earlier, we have really restricted our travels to conferences, certainly nothing outside of the country. Is where we're at at this moment.
Thank you. Thank you. And Donna?
Just thank you from my colleagues for hearing my request. I had some really good things back. I don't necessarily agree, but that's not, we don't all have to agree. You brought up some really good points and we'll go forward. I'm going to switch gears now. Three point one eight, the registration fees for OPSA PES and OPSA Labor Relations. I know at some point we had talked about adding the OPSA AGM to that list. And I am wondering if this would be an appropriate point to do that or if so, because three point one six is essentially going forward, going to restrict us to simply OPSA and CSBA conferences without any external permission from the board. So I'm wondering if we want to beef that up a bit. We had discussion offline about it a few months ago and I didn't know if this was an appropriate time to bring it up.
So to make that happen, Roxana, that would require a report with a motion to, no, that can be added here in the policy.
The policy will come back for approval of the board, so we can make the changes that are agreed upon here. And then there's one more chance to go through and approve as is or with amendments.
So do we need a show of hands? Who's in favor or?
So I I would, I would support what Donna is saying, just like, you know, we're removing the NSBA from one place. I I would support because again, OPSA is definitely, we we belong, we're members of OPSA. We pay a membership fee. So and there's all the learning we do there is applicable to what we do here in this board. So I would definitely support what Donna is saying. And I would add it here. The only caveat is, is it, we are going to be taking money from the prior term reserve account. So as long as that reserve account is funded, then by all means, I I would definitely support adding it here.
I would support that as well. And the only reason why I asked is because I believe for three point one eight to happen for the OPSA labor and the PES to come out of prior term, there was a report with a motion. And that's why I wondered if it was necessary to do the same for the AGM. Amy?
Sure.
There's no motion required for that because it would be coming as part of a package. This this entire governance procedure would be coming forward. So if it was added in, trustees would vote on it like any other edition. And it seems that there is support for this around the table, so I haven't heard anyone speak against it. And um, it, it seems that there is support for this around the table, so I haven't heard anyone speak against it. But perhaps we need to hear from more trustees.
Is anybody opposed to that? I'm not seeing that. So this will come with the change to the next board meeting, and we will approve it there. Okay, thank you very much, Roxana. And?
Sorry.
Yep, Tanya?
Siri thinks I said, Siri, I said, sorry. Um, better I'll talk back.
No need to apologize.
Someone's got a mouth on him. Um, he's very polite. Okay, um. I ask this because it's a bit timely, only because um AGM is happening next month. So if we approve this, um, and I think I'm being a little bit selfish. I know several of us are going to the OPSPA AGM in June. Could we do this in a way that our AGM for this year would be retroactive? So anyone who's attending AGM this year would have it covered from the prior term reserve account?
Donna would like to answer. If I understand correctly, and, and I've got no dog in this fight because I'm covered just slightly above that because I'm on the exact, my expenses are already paid, so I've got no dog in this fight, I can just agree with you. I believe this will come to the June 3 meeting and be approved at the June 3 meeting, and the AGM is not until the 12th. So it would be an approved policy in place before the AGM. So when you submitted your AGM expenses of your hotel and your registration fee, I, I, I'm looking at Roxana and asking if I have that correct.
That's correct, and we can make it happen.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, that's all sorted out. Yes, okay, so that is it on this item, I believe, and we'll see it at the next board meeting. Thank you very much, Roxana. So we will move on to item 6.0, and that's committee updates. Standing committee, starting with board self-assessment. I'm just gonna really quickly recap that in January, we had looked at the domains of strategic role, trustee role, and fiduciary responsibility from the board self-assessment survey that we did. We looked at areas where there was disagreement and, and tried to discuss that and see where the differences lie. In the domains of communication and board processes, we had largely agreements. So the areas that remain for exploration are board member team and areas for improvement. And so what I would like to do is share with you in advance of the June Committee of the Hall, the um, the summary of the results from the survey, from those two domains. And perhaps we can all do some self-reflection, and if there's time at the June Committee of the Hall, we can perhaps share our thoughts in a kind of a self-guided PD session. So that is my update on that. Are there any questions? Okay, moving on to policy bylaw on governance, over to you, Robbie.
Thank you, the committee met a week and a half ago, and we'll be meeting again this Friday. We are taking a look at the um, the board governance bylaw and the possibility of entirely folding. We just updated our electronic meetings policy, but does it belong as a, as its own separate policy anymore? Should it simply be rolled into the board governance bylaw? The um, having, following on from the filling a trustee vacancy governance procedure, given the process we just went through, taking some learnings from that, we'll bring that to Committee of the Hall for discussion. And trustee Rocha spotted in the ED Act that there is a requirement that every board shall adopt and maintain policies with respect to pregnancy leaves and parental leaves of members of the board. We do not have such a policy in place, so Manager Khan is studying about doing a little bit of research on that. And we will bring policies forward in the fall, suggestions forward in the fall for the board to consider.
Thank you, that's great. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to trustees' professional development with Navid.
Oh, today, uh, I will do the update.
Shini, go ahead.
So last month, we have a PE committee meeting, and this year we take, we took the, the survey results from the board self, self-assessment. So the, the survey gave us a very clear big picture, which area we can improve and which, where are the priorities. In the meeting, we reviewed it mostly focused on the three areas, trustees' role and maintaining strategic focus. And the third one is the community relation. And so after that, we review all the details and review the feedback. So after this meeting, and we decide we will do a survey to, to send to, as the survey to all trustees to get further feedback on, and what content in the next school year, and what is the topic we selected as a priority, and at what content we expect. So this is a survey we will, the committee, our committee will send out soon. And the, the other thing we are, we will, our committee will propose a competitive, competitive process for finding the session presenters, so that we'll make a proposal for that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, and I'll just tag along to that with respect to trustee onboarding and orientation, as we will have a new trustee coming on board at the end of June. I did ask for um input into or reflections on your own personal journey as a trustee with the orientation and onboarding you received, and now that we can reflect back a few years, if you have any suggestions, please forward them to me. I thank the trustees that did provide their feedback already, and I share that with Manager Khan, who will be facilitating that process for the new trustee. Okay, and finally, update financial advocacy. I'll just say that we continue to look at opportunities, we're waiting for the new budget to be released to um figure out what the next kind of steps are and what strategies we want to employ. So that's it. Okay, any, item seven, trustee questions of clarifications for tonight's agenda. Are there any? Seeing, oop, Tanya.
Here's my question of clarification. So this evening, we, we listened to um our student trustees and the mental health subcommittee. And at the, as much as I love listening to students, and I think their voice is so important, at the end of the day, their ask is not governance, their ask is operational. So I'm wondering, why, why, why did we have the presentation? Because what they're asking for is not something we can deliver on. So I'm wondering, why was it part of the agenda?
I will answer that question. This was something that student trustees were very keen on pursuing, and as you know, it fits well with one of our commitments and something that each CSB prioritizes in general. Given the amount of work that they've done, and that this is something that they wish to work with the director on implementing in the schools, I thought it was worthy for us to hear student voice and student perspective and, you know, learn from them what it is that they're looking for. And, and you know, perhaps there are opportunities for us to, to support them beyond, you know, moral support. So that's why I, I encouraged this presentation. I thought it was, we don't get a lot of opportunities to hear directly from students, and I think this was important. It, it represents the voice of the student senate as well, and many students who support our staff's mental health advisory committee. So that's why I thought it was of interest to us. Okay, moving on to trustee news for credit. Oh, I'm sorry, Donna.
Thank you. I, I just want to tag onto that. I didn't mind having the presentation, gonna be honest, because we get presentations on programs within our board. Um, I didn't see they were specifically looking for an ask. It's important to know what we're going on. Like, I know for myself, when I was at Sal last week, and they were talking about SWAC and Empor, and I had to go, what about SWAC? It's school within a college. So I would love to see if in the fall, we can bring forward a presentation on some of those amazing programs that we may not know about. I think it's really important to have those. I will express frustration that we have timelines on the side of our agenda. We had 10 minutes listed for that, and it went nearly 45. Um, and that, that is something that is happening over and over and over with our presentations, and that's a frustration for me. I love getting the information items, but I need to be honest with you, once you hit 20 minutes, I'm gone. I'm, I'm not as attentive as I am at the beginning, so I think we need to keep the information pieces, those presentations. But we also need to be respectful of the work we need to do around this table and, and give it to us in ways that we can absorb it. So that, that would be, be my personal thing.
Thank you, and on behalf of the student trustees, I will apologize. We did set a time limit. I did want to assist them with kind of gauging the length of the presentation, but they're students and they're busy, and I was not able to assist that. They, this was not, you know, finished in a, in a manner that would have suited my schedule, so we went ahead with it. And I had a hard, I would have had a very hard time interrupting them. I think, you know, we are here because of students, everything we do is for the students. And so it was very, to me, it was very important to hear from them. And I will do my best to make sure that they understand the time limits. But I think, you know, with so many presenting, they just got really into it, and they had a lot they wanted to share.
And I can understand that, and as a follow-up, I, I would not have brought it up. It was not something that I've had seen happening pretty consistently at meetings for several months. So that's maybe something that we look at going into September, is either having realistic times on the side or looking to stay according to the times. Because staying, staying late at meetings, I'm not at my best at 9:30 making decisions and things like that, so that would be my request for the fall, please.
Yep, that's fair, thank you very much. Okay, so we have completed the agenda for this public session of the Committee of the Hall meeting. And Jean, would you like to make the motion to move into private?
Yes, I would.
Okay, thank you. So we will move into private session, respecting personal and negotiation matters. All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now back in public session of the committee of the whole board and I, since the agenda has been exhausted, I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much and good night.